New Year. Thank you, Rosa. I'll start over. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:00 PM. I would like to call to order the January 11th, 2023 Parent and Community Advisory Council meeting. The purpose of this meeting is for the committee to discuss why we are here and what we hope to accomplish as an advisory council. This meeting will be recorded and it's on the PGCPS Board of Education webpage for the public to view. At this time, Ms. Lopez, we would like to do roll call.
Yes, Reverend Dr. Orlando Jermaine Begel. Mr. Clarence Dixon.
Present.
Mr. Will Epps.
Present.
Ms. Teria Hollingship.
Present.
Ms. Hollingship?
I'm present.
I think I see her. Dr. Sheila Jackson?
Present.
Ms. Carlotta Lundie?
Present. Happy New Year.
Ms. Adrienne Mayo Brown?
Present.
Ms. Dolores Milhouse?
Present.
Dr. Sharon Porter? Mr. T. Carter Ross? Ms. Keisha Thorpe? Ms. Kira Walker? Mrs. Robin Welsh?
Good evening. I'm present and Happy New Year.
Ms. Dallas Wood?
Hello and present.
Mrs. Adam Stafford? We have gone, Ms. Milhouse.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. So today, I just want to welcome everyone. We're in item 1.2 of the agenda. I want to welcome everyone in the opening remarks from board liaison will be moved today. I will propose that they be moved down on the agenda item as she's asked me to move down for a little later. But I am Dolores Milhouse, the Chair for the Parent and Community Advisory Council, and I'm a representative for District 7. I do want to thank our board members, if any are present, and our board liaison, board member, Ms. Shayla Adam Stafford, for her presence here tonight. She will be coming. I want to thank our board office staff for your support, Ms. Rosa Lopez and Mr. Joe Day Newsome, as well as the PCAT members that are in attendance. At this time, we still have a vacancy for the union member. At this time, when item, I'm sorry, we are now moving into the adoption of the agenda for meeting January 11th, 2023, and I am proposing that a change for item 1.6 be moved by request from the board liaison, that it be moved to the bottom of the agenda to down to 3.0, follow up the next steps. Does anyone have any objection to having 1.6 moved down? And it actually will become item 3.3 on the agenda? Are there any objections?
Do you need a motion or we could just?
Yeah, could you give me a motion? Give me a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Was there an oppose?
No, I said aye.
Okay.
Excuse me, one sec. I don't want to oppose, but I do want to say I see on the agenda only a 1.5, up to 1.5. So did you mean to move the 1.5 down to 3.0?
No, it's in the 12.7 folder.
It's a report of board liaison, 1.6. Oh, I'm on board docs and I see it as reported of board liaison 1.4, actually. Okay.
Mine does too.
It is 1.5, Ms. Milhouse.
Okay, am I looking at, I'm looking at the agenda in the drive?
Yes.
Am I looking at the wrong agenda because that's what's in the shared drive?
Some of us are looking at the one that's on PGCPS and that one, I think the numbering is different.
Yes, because originally, Ms. Milhouse, yes, the adoption of the minutes where we're not on that.
Oh, that was removed.
Correct.
Right, right. Okay, so you are, I apologize. Give me one second. And so it wasn't just updated in this drive. Okay. Thank you. I'm about to get back on track, you guys. Give me a second. Thank you, Ms. Welsh.
I'm proud of you.
We're going to go back and we're going to, let me state again what I am requesting, that item 1.5 is moved and becomes item 3.3 on the agenda item. Can I have a motion to make that amendment to the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. And so at this time, all in favor, say yea.
Okay.
Yay.
Yea.
Opposed? None opposed? So it, the budget, the budget, Lord, I'm sorry. The agenda for tonight, January 11th, 2023, has been adopted. We will now move into the report of the board liaison. And so I appreciate you all for being with me in that hiccup moment. As you see, we do not have the minute meetings to adopt from our last meeting because there needed to be some updates and corrections for that. So those minute meetings will be updated and made available to us for our February meeting. A couple of things that I have been working on, as I gave you all the information about the the policy 0105 and the discussion that we had at the last meeting, to really galvanize around how we move forward as a council. I know that I've been a little anxious and wanting to do more work versus just having these meetings and just having these discussions. But the reality is that discovery work is very important to get a very good understanding of what we're doing because there are so many items that we could focus on and try to address. Transportation, the grading policy, the uniform policy, the list goes on and on. But as we discussed, some of the commonalities that we all had that were, you know, impacting all of the districts were how we are engaging as a school district as a whole. And in that, one of the things that I did ask in our polls to our board liaison, as well as the board office, is having a retreat for us, a mini-retreat, about four hours where we can come together and have a better understanding of who we are as members, how do we continue to work together, and how are we going to move forward on getting out into the community without us being overtaxed? Because we are individual people who don't have offices to utilize, office support to utilize, to connect with all of the schools in our district. But if we meet with our board members who have access to that and could work with them in being a part of their monthly meetings or their coffee and chat and choose, or have their engaging, and then we can be that voice with them while they're out in the community, that will really help us get a good sense of where we are and what we're doing. I will provide more information as they will work to identify the location, which we would have it, which would be a PGCPS location, and what they could do to provide us during that retreat, which would be making sure we understand the Open Meeting Act, which governs our meeting, right? Understanding how to access information such as the board meetings, such as how to provide parents with the information that they need, who they need to contact or connect with based on the various issues that they may have. And the more engaged and aware we are, the more that we can be the ambassadors to go out, get information, and to advise as a collective to the board some of the things that we definitely need, that need to begin to work on, such as the revision of policy 0105. I did also meet with Dr. Jackson to discuss, you know, what it would look like to develop a survey, to really focus on how do we gather that information about engagement and working with the different departments for the approval process. But the most important thing is really just seeing what resources are made available to us. We don't have a budget, so it's not as if we can really go out, say that we're going to host an event and provide snacks or anything, or pass out any papers or information. So we really have to understand what's available to us and what we can do. Because I can speak for myself, I'm one person. There are several schools in my district. I don't have the capacity to go and knock on doors to see what's happening and what people are feeling or to attend every PTO meeting. But there is a capacity from working with my board member, as he may be sending out a blast of information to those parent groups, how do I become a part of the conversation with him when he's meeting with them to gather some of the concerns and the issues? The other piece that I really wanted to share with you all is we've been doing a lot. We've done a lot of work over these past couple of months. And I know it has been very administrative, the tasks have been getting to bylaws together, getting a better understanding of what our vision and mission is going to be. But as we are gathering more information about the issues that we may have in our school district, I want us to also remember that providing information, sharing information, and making sure that people are informed is a big part of being a part of this council. So we can then share back as a committee that we report out to the Board of Education to say, hey, these are some of the things that we definitely think that we need to work on as a school district, advising which policy they need to begin to address. So I am looking to provide our first report in February. And the template will be very simple. It will just cover a period of time of the work that we've done, what we've accomplished, what are some of the main objectives? And of course, you know, we as a committee will look at it, approve it, and then it will be sent out. So it will not be done in a silo, but I will just gather the work that we've done, put it all together, provide you all the draft report. We'll vote on that to send forward so they can see the work that we have done. And you also can share what you're doing individually in your districts, what your board members, as well as what you may be doing collaborating with one another. And so at that, this time, that concludes my report for the chair. Any questions? Okay, well, move on to item number two, discussion and action items. I gave you all at the last meeting the the Equitable Family Engagement Report, hoping that you all had an opportunity to read it, to review it as it aligns with policy 0105. And so I just really want to open the floor up for us to just do a round robin, for everyone to discuss what you've been working on, right? As it relates to discussing what are some issues or what are some great things that are happening in your district as it relates to engagement? What are some of the things that may be inclusive of policy 0105 that we may need to put on the table? But what have you all been doing since the last meeting as it relates to the information that I shared and the charge that we all were given to really talk about the equitable family engagement practices that we saw in the report? And what do we see that's happening in our district? So I'm going to have to do it in this way, and I'm just going to have to go and call out people and do it as such. I'm going to start with Mr. Epps.
Good evening, everybody. So.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Epps, if you can say that what you're, how you are here on the committee, what you're representing, you're representing, like if you're the business as you are, district, and then you're named in that.
Sure, Will Epps, Vice Chair. I represent the business community. I actually live in District 5, where our board member, Board of Education member is Dr. Support Miller. We are actually, I have a meeting scheduled with her, my wife and I have a meeting scheduled with her next week just to, one, meet her, and, two, just to hear her heartbeat around parental engagement. It's going to be a very soft, what I'll call a soft meeting. I want everyone, you know, I tell Dolores all the time, Ms. Mills all the time, I'm not a politician. I want to work, you know, and we're on the same team, you know, I'm not here to compete with anyone. You know, I'm here to be a part of the collaborative effort to do what's best for our children. And as I really narrow my focus, not just within the business community, but around fathers. And so that's my next step on the initiative as well. I'm also connecting thanks to Ms. Milhouse, Mr. Curtis Valentine as well, who has a lot of things that's going in the mix as it relates to dealing with fathers and male teachers. And so I'm connecting with him as well. And so just really, my initial initiative is to start relationships, explain what our mission is and our vision is for the community, and come up with next steps to accomplish that in a collective nature.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Lundie?
Hello, everyone. I am Carlotta Lundie, and I am the, my area is the Civic and Community Engagement and my district, District 4, and working with my school board member, Adam Stanford. So, wow, it's been a lot going on. So what I'm looking at engaging, excuse me, engaging outside of the building is one of my concerns, the school building, and then also making a commitment to equitable, excuse me, family engagement. Okay, so engaging outside of the school building, I've started to make connections with schools and their PTOs. And as Ms. Milhouse said, we're only one person, so you know, you have to take it as you can, you know, go and do it. And so I did get a chance to meet with one of our schools, I think it was Kenmore, I think it was Kenmore Middle School. It was very engaging, learned about their concerns, some of the parents' concerns, of course, was the issue around school safety for their students. And also I had an opportunity to attend a Facebook group meeting where the issue was around, I was invited to that, the issue was around grading, equitability, equitability in grading. So parents had concern about that. Also, I'm going to be collaborating with Ms. Thorpe on doing some community canvassing in our high-needs area schools. And so we're going to be looking at Glen Arden, Blainesburg, Fairmark Heights, Landover, and Palmer Park. So we're going to like, you know, try to do that on Saturdays. Also, I did have a chance to attend some of the school board meetings that they've had. I've also looked over the proposed budget and had some questions around that, that maybe I'll get to a later one tonight. Also, I've started a community engagement page. I'm calling it the Prince George's County Parents for Education. I've started that group on a community engagement vehicle called Next Door, where I share what's going on with PCAT, also share what's going on with the Prince George's County School Board. Also, the other night, I had an opportunity to provide written testimony to my own mayor and council about PCAT, letting them know what we're doing, we're here, and also put my information in my testimony, and it was read into the record out loud. So I am doing, focusing on engaging outside of the school building and making a commitment to equity and family engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lundie. Next, I see Mr. Dixon.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Clarence Dixon from District 5. I, just late, just before our Christmas break, worked with two schools as relates to community engagement and building a relationship within those two schools. I participated in the last two PTA meetings in building a relationship between the PTA members, the families, and as well as PCAT, as being a PCAT member, and explaining to them, to the families, what we can support, how I can support them as to building a stronger relationship in a community and playing a major role within the schools. The two schools that I visit, PTA meetings, is have the Hills Elementary School and Kennelworth. And certainly having a coffee Zoom meeting with the PTA presidents and the parents as well to voice their concerns and see how we can work collaboratively together and have a breakout session with the principals at those two schools that I am currently looking at before I go on to the other District 5 schools. At that time, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Mr. Ross?
Hi, and I apologize for my voice. I'm recovering from CSRSV stuff, so excuse that. But it's been a little bit slow because of the holidays. And then where I am in District 3, the seat was up for election, so the election season sort of complicated a few things. I have met with Pamela Boozer Struther, my board member, and she is working to put together a meeting with her, the school leadership groups that she works with, with the schools in the area. I've also met with the Chair of the Heitzel City Education Advisory Committee to understand what priorities they're working on. They work with, it's eight or nine PGCPS schools that overlap the boundaries of the city of Heitzel. So there's some good information and connections in there, both to the school side as well as to the city side and then civic groups that they work with. Also trying to pull together, refine a survey for the District 3 school PTAs, PTOs, and other engaged student or school leaders to try and gather information and background on where their issues and concerns are lying.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Wood?
Hi, everyone. Couldn't find a mute button. All right, Talise Wood, I'm the teacher representative for District 1. I've been in constant contact with David Murray, who's the District 1 board member. And due to turnover with the board, has been updating me as often as possible. During my parent meetings at school, I speak with members regarding C, PAT, and PCAT, excuse me, and how can we can support them in the community. I'm also a member of the Equity Team at the school where I am, and speaking about our committee and how we can support and use some of the ideas and strategies and tools there for the greater District, District 1, and being in constant contact and speaking with the board member regarding that.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Ms. Mayo Brown?
Hello, everybody. Happy New Year. I have reached, I'm Adrian Mayo Brown, District 2, from District 2. I have reached out and I'm trying to set something up with our new board member, Jonathan Brakes, who's transitioning in, I'm sure, and is very excited. So I'm working to get in contact with him. I'm also attended a couple of just community groups here in my local neighborhood of Greenbelt, as well as reached out to Greenbelt Middle and Greenbelt Elementary. And those community groups just tried to kind of gauge a little bit of understanding as far as what we do, as far as what their needs are. It was a lot of conversations about transparency and timeliness, access to, to have communications with the school systems to be more preventive instead of reactive, how to better engage between, I'm sorry, better communication between the families and the schools, the schools as far as students who might have problems that aren't bad enough to be diagnosed as far as a 504 or IEP, but still bad enough where it could be disruptive or problematic? Like where do they fall in the spectrum? And then just questions about what we, who are, what is PCAT? Who are we? What can we do? What access do we have? So just a lot of trying to share information both ways while we figure out, you know, how streamline our mission and where we're going.
Thank you, Ms. Mayo Brown. Ms. Hollingship?
Good evening. I have attended two PTA meetings in my area, and I plan to try to attend a couple of more. One of the challenges is that in our area, they have designated days. So I think like elementary schools are usually on one day, and middle schools are on a different day. So it's kind of hard to kind of stretch. So what I've been trying to do is be creative and meeting with the PTA members outside and trying to utilize my children who are very technology savvy where I am not, where they could help me develop a video that can be shown at PTA meetings that may be a better way to get into more schools. So just trying to make sure that people that I encounter, I'm telling them about the PCAT. I have been able to tell several of the parents at the two PTA meetings, and hopefully they have tuned in tonight. I'm not sure, but I'm pretty much sure they'll send an email to let me know whether they were able to join or not. And I do plan to reach out to District 6, our newly elected person.
Okay, that would be Mr. Jackson, Brandon Jackson?
Correct.
Yep. All right. Good stuff. You're welcome. And so, Ms. Thorpe?
Yes, good evening. So I actually was not at the last meeting, but I had an opportunity to catch up with Ms. Lundie. And we, because we're in the same district, we have been having conversations about how we're going to engage our parents a lot more and thinking about also some of the challenges our parents may have in terms of engaging in community activities and in schools and in the education of their children. And we talked about the schools that we would identify in the high-needs areas and to really meet and formulate a plan for community canvassing. And I have visited two schools already in District 4 to introduce myself and to like find out how to support parent engagement and some of the challenges that parents have from, just from the school perspective. And just looking forward to attending some of those PTA meetings to really think about, to really hear from the parents, actually, what their challenges are as well, and what are some of the things that they expect from us? And also to introduce myself to as many of the schools in our district as possible and to talk about what PCAT is and what our roles are and and how we can support them and just how we can be a voice for those who are, for those under-engaged. and how we can support them, and just how we can be a voice for those who are, for those under engaged voices. And uh and I also plan to, I know uh Ms. Lundie has already met with Ms. Adam Stafford, and that's my next um step is to also meet with uh Ms. Adam Stafford as well, so that we can um go over some of the plans. And I know also earlier you talk about um Ms. Milhouse, you talk about, you know, how we can actually get those, get information. Um and that was, that's also one of the things um Ms. Lundie and I talk about is um who do we engage in terms of getting this information for parents um to form connections with them? So so those are some of the things that uh we're going to be working on together.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So I want to go to the specialty areas now. Dr. Jackson?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Uh first of all, I want you to know that the reports that I've, we've heard so far have just been so invigorating for me. Uh you know, my role is Director of the Department of Family and School Partnerships, and it's just like uh I'm in the middle of a choir right now. Uh some of the things that you all have shared are just so inspiring. Um family engagement is my life. It has been for almost thirty years here in Prince George's County. And in relations to that article that we had to read, but the the real uh experts are right here in this room. Uh I I just want to say that equitable engagement is really my heartbeat. And I just want to quickly share a few things that have happened since our last meeting. As you know, in our department, we run what some people in other districts call Parent University. In Prince George's County, our board voted to call it Family Institute. And we have weekly sessions um where we invite parents. It goes out to all parents in this, in the county. Um and it's really our platform for equitable engagement, because everything that we do is based upon input that has come from families expressing their interests, their needs, what they need help with, and that is our goal. We want to make sure that if we bring anybody to present a workshop for parents, it's based upon what parents have said. It's not us, it's what parents have said. So coming up in January, our our calendar is being fleshed out, and we actually have one coming up uh on uh um students of executive thinking skills, um testing that's coming up. So that that, you know, again, is equitable engagement. Uh we've also provided training uh for our secretaries and administrative assistants about um customer service skills and how to effectively work to engage families that come to our schools. We don't want any family turned away from a school feeling that they're not heard, they're not seen. So that's part of of the work that we do. Um we're also, and I'm excited to hear it, so many of you have already reached out to your parent leadership organizations and your schools, because one of my jobs is creating that database annually of where are those organizations, who are those leaders? And so uh I'll be happy as soon as it's finalized. It's supposed to be finalized by January thirty first to share information with you. We've been surveying all schools. Um and again, it's whether it's P T A, P T O, Parent Club, Parent Advisory Group, um we'll, we will have that information available. Uh we've been providing resources to principals. Um and again, it's about helping build their capacity. As you know, not many educators ever get classes pre-service about how to effectively build partnerships with parents. And that's part of our job here in Prince George's County, so I'm constantly providing resources and support to principals. Uh I I provide a monthly class for teachers um through our Family Institute um where they, teachers actually can get a stipend if they take this class. It's from five to eight once a month. And it's teaching teachers some skills for effectively working with parents. How do you, as a teacher, um build your capacity to make sure that you're engaging the ch- the parents of all of the children you serve? Um and then finally, uh one of the uh newest things that came about this year, we um, the school system adopted its Code of Conduct for parents, volunteers, and visitors. And you know, if a parent happens to violate uh the parent, the Code of Conduct, they cut, they get sent to me. And we have a training session, a conversation really, about how do we best uh mitigate whatever the situation is. You know, as a parent, sometimes we might get upset because sometimes we feel we're bounced around from office to office to office before a concern is addressed. And you know, sometimes people blow up. And so my job is to support that parent that may have had that happen to them. And how do you recalibrate so that we, we want all families engaged? And we want to make it possible that families can be engaged and that schools know how to embrace and engage families. So that's my report, and thank you all.
Thank you all, and I'm sorry I had to go on mute. A little one ran into the room. Um Ms. Welsh, thank you, Dr. Jackson.
So unfortunately, I don't have much opportunity to actually work with community and with parents because of the nature of the work I do, except in one area. And that has to do with somehow our office got so involved in the process of making sure that volunteers have gone through the finger bring and C P S. Says, and have also, have also done their safety schools training. And you would not believe how much time I have myself and to other staff members, and and I will say this, there are a lot of parents volunteering across the school system because my, I have an administrative secretary who is probably on the phone most of the day on answering questions about what do I need to do, how do I do this, whatever? And then I have another person who's responding to emails, and then any of the flow over comes to me. So I would say at least one person is dedicated all day long, eight hours a day, in addressing questions and concerns about volunteers and what, from volunteers and what they need, and can we help them get ready to do, go on field trips and those kinds of things? So we do have, I I feel like there are parents, we have a lot of parents are very uh wanting to be very involved in the process and are willing to donate their time and and help out in the schools and help out on field trips, which I think is is excellent. Um I do, though, I will say the other two areas that I've spent a lot of time, which does impact certainly parents and students as well as staff or is writing policies. So just for this past month, I have worked on the athletic and extracurricular, uh the academic eligibility for athletics and extracurricular activities of the public charter schools, Board of Education Steering Committees and fo- focused work groups, trespass warnings, heroin and education and use of overdosing uh reversing medicine, and then meetings of the board. So it just six policies, that's a significant number of policies we work out one time that the committee has been very active in doing revisions or adding on new policies. But I want to say that uh in looking at the heroin and opiate education, because that has come, that one was exactly mandated by law for the school system to have a policy for that. And we have been doing a lot, the school system has been doing a lot of trying to educate parents about the um about the addiction, about heroin and opiate addiction, as well as giving them the opportunity to know about the fact that there are uh these medications for overdosing that can really, can save their child's life or anyone's life for that matter. And one of the things that I keep running into from different groups within the school system is how do we get the word out? How do we get parents involved? How do parents learn more about this so that they can, they can be a partner with us? I know that this face on, who is our um Associate Superintendent Student Services, has been doing, along with Richard Mudding, has been doing training on that. And I don't know, Sheila, have you been doing any training in that arena also? You have, yes. So uh but that is an area that needs extensive amount, you know, more that like, that would be so important for parents and system to be able to partner and really work hard, you know, to help our students because we're talking about the safety and health of our students. So so um I would say that's, you know, those are all critical things. The other thing, just to let you know, is the General Assembly um just uh filed their their prefile bills today, and I am now tracking a legislation that impacts the school system. So that is a massive job at this point. It's new. I've never done this myself, so uh it'll be interesting to see. Um but there will definitely be things, bills that are going to come through that will impact uh certainly the school system, but also parents, you know, depending on whatever. And so being on this committee, I think, will be very helpful, because one of my jobs will be to share with the uh the uh legis- the uh the Department of Legislative Services, what would certain bills, what impact would they have for either our school system or the parents or the students within our school system? Um so I think this is going to be an excellent opportunity to be able to channel information that way um to give legislators information too about, you know, what we need in in the school system.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. And that just, you know, for me, it it's almost if, if we need to make sure you have a a time on the the agenda to share with us um some of those bills that you may come across and how we need to uh make sure that we're sharing that with the parents. And I know that they also will probably have the opportunity for public comment that we could make parents aware that they need to lend their voice um for that. And and that, that to me is what, as a P C A, that, that, those are the things that we get that information, that some people are just not sitting there looking for that. That's something that you have to do. So you become the eyes for us, and then we become the voice for the board. Right? And and then to say to the board members, hey, make sure that you all also maybe put this in some information that you, whatever you're sending out. So I I think um everyone had great stuff, but I I just wanted to interject on that, that that some of that information sharing that would be very useful for all of us to give to our um the, our districts as we are supporting our board members and connecting with the community. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, that, that, I just got excited. I'm sorry, everyone. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's good.
Dr. Jermaine um Bago, good day. How are you?
Everyone, I'm doing well. Uh Orlando Bago, I represent the faith community on uh this committee. Um and one of the things that I have been doing um is reaching out to the faith-based community uh to see uh which houses of worship are still operating uh before and after care schools. Uh what I have learned is it has been a great challenge for those houses of worship. Uh some of them have not gone back to in-person or had to let go staff. Uh and so now we have this void um between the the faith-based community and the schools that they were serving. Um and so what I'm trying to do is come up with a list of those who are back open um as well as those that have closed down, and trying to see what type of resources are available, uh because these institutions were very pivotal. Um not just in performing the before and after care, uh but they also provided additional resources uh particularly on the elementary school level. Um and they, uh and those resources went to both the student as well as to the educators. Uh and so that's a task that I have assigned to myself uh while serving on here. And I'm hoping uh that we can get some of these uh before and after, and Saturday Academy's back open.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That would be great. And I I think everyone has gone except for me. I mean, Ms. Adam Stafford, you know, I mean, you, this is what you do all day, right? You you are in the community, so I, I'm not overlooking you, but I'm gonna give you the floor. I'm gonna give you the floor, and I see your hand is up. Um so I'll, I'll report out on the things that I've done since we last met. Of course, um you know, thoroughly gone through, you know, zero, one, zero, five in um like, okay, yeah, we need subcommittees, we we need surveys, right? I actually have been meeting after meeting. I have a meeting scheduled uh with almost all of the new board members at this point in time to really um want to introduce myself as the chair, but get an understanding uh when they were on the outside, right? How did they perceive P G C P S? And now that they are on the inside, right? Let let's see how different or the gaps in those perceptions. Um and if they change, and how how do we really work together to make sure that the platforms that they were elected upon are the platforms that still align with what they will do to ensure that we have a culture that is collaborative and we're working together? I've been meeting with um associate instructional directors. I've been meeting with everyone to really understand when we talk about engagement, we sometimes only look at families, how we're engaging with the family, right? And the teacher, in that dynamic. But everybody has to kind of collaborate and work in a sense. How is the school district partnering with business entities? How are we partnering, engaging with the faith-based entities? How are we, right, as parents, engaging with um anyone outside of the schoolhouse when we do have an issue and we do escalate outside? Then what happens when they say, well, did you talk to this person? Well, I want you to know that if we have a policy in place and I'm following a policy, I'm, I'm where at the top because I couldn't get what I needed at my schoolhouse, right? But what does that look like, how we collaboratively work together? So I was recently on um the, the, the work group that was focusing on House Bill three fifty-five. Um and that was over a span of about two months. We just finished and had to submit the report in. And that bill is going to really talk about the governance of um our Board of Education. But it was important for me to really make sure that that they understood that there is an engage, a focus on how we are engaging. We have a P C A. And so there is a desire to hear the voices of parents and community members. And so we need to make sure if that's desire, that there also are some metrics in place to measure how we're doing that, right? Um I'm also now um on the blueprint implementation for P G C P S. And um so that voice again is allowing the parents' perspective to be heard. And um Dr. Jackson and I actually are on that implementation work group. And um there are, there are a few parents, but I will be, you know, making a suggestion that they may need to open up to a few more. Um because there is no way two or three voices are enough to represent the, the diversity that we have in our school district. Um and this plan is going to really identify what we need to do, how it needs to get done, because it's tied with funding. And of course, I I am on pillar five about accountability and governance. So all that other stuff, you all put it in place. I just want to make sure that we are online and in target in that. But we are engaging with each other in a way that we are respecting everyone as individuals who are peers, and no one is above or beneath anybody else. And together, we will change the school district. Um I am meeting now on a biweekly basis with my district member and working with him to um help him create an engagement strategy for our district. And I will definitely share it with everyone. I don't believe that we need to reinvent the wheel. Um I've been talking to several board members, and some of them are doing a lot of things that are already in place. So it really is, how do we take what's happening as it relates to engagement and add to it? Not just say, okay, well, this is what you all need to do. This is, no, let, what works for our school district, but what are we doing that we collectively can do together that it can impact all of us? And so um and then, of course, trying to operate and support you all as the chair. And so I'm gonna put a pin in myself right now. I know there were two hands up. Ms. Lundie, I believe that you were the first one that I did see, and I am trying to multitask. So I'm gonna drop it on to you right now.
All right, thank you, Chairwoman Milhouse. Um yes, I was remiss and forgetting that I was very, when I attended the um Ken Moore's um P T O meeting, P T S A meeting. First of all, they was very, and parents were very engaged. There were over a hundred um parents and staff in that meeting, and they were very much, the principal was very much um inviting parents to be a part of the P T O and to get the students involved for the P T S A. So I wanted to acknowledge that. I also forgot to acknowledge that um I will be attending the um um Stanford, um Adam Stanford's um monthly meeting on January the twenty eighth. I will be attending her monthly meeting on that. And as um Ms. Thorpe mentioned, I have had a conversation with her. And so I do look forward to um our continued partnership uh in District Four. And so I do look forward to um our continued partnership uh in District Four. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lundey. Ms. Adam Stafford.
Now, you all have to excuse me, you know, I just had a little baby, so I was. I'm adjusting. First P C A meeting. Thank you, everybody. Uh, first of all, can you all just give yourselves like a little round of applause or some snaps? You all are rocking it. I heard just, I could feel the energy from Dr. Jackson through. Through the screen, but I mean, this is exactly what. I know the vision for this group was to be really just so, you know. Outwardly facing and bring that information back to advise the board. I mean, you all are killing it. And so I just want to tell you, thank you so much for your service and all that you're doing. And I'm definitely gonna tell my colleagues, hey. This P C A is rocking and rolling, so you need to, you know, catch on. Um, I have uh had an opportunity to reach out to um to unions, to our P G C E A. And are um asking twenty-two fifty to see if we can get someone to be a part of this group to be our labor representative. So I'm still awaiting uh for a response there. Um, additionally, um I have shared, um I just recently uh shared uh the contact information. I believe Rosa uh who's our support, our board support, had already shared you all's contact information with your board members. Um, to try to help facilitate that um discussion and in connection. Um, you know, and just, I think that for me, you know, I'm really looking forward to seeing uh what you're leaning from. Your surveys, from your canvassing, from your meetings. Um, the specifics on how this policy can be improved. I was actually going to ask uh Ms. Welsh. If you might be able to share out with the team that um spreadsheet that's on the P G C P S website. That talks about all of the policies you're working on and the status. I I know I recently saw that. If am I, do you know which one I'm talking about, the um the policy on the Policy and Governance tab, I believe?
Yes, it's it's actually when you're on the website and you go to where it says on in the in the boards. Where it has the list of different things, like the videos from meet meetings and stuff. There's a thing that says policies. If you click on that. And then you go down, there's like all the policies are broken out by the zero, 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 the the one thousands, two thousand, three thousands. You get past all those little um um icons or whatever. And underneath that, you can click on that and that gives you an update of every, like the policies we're working on. And what is the status of each policy, whether it's that the committee's still working on it, whether it's been. Send it to the board for public comment, whether it's first, second reader, or whether it's been enacted. So i- it's it's actually a very nice document that Cindy Adeline has put together for for the Policy and Governance Committee. And I utilize it all the time because it's just, there's so much stuff going on. It's really helpful.
Yes, I was actually, yeah, so um Ms. Welsh and um Chair Millhouse, we can, I think getting that. Document to this team would be beneficial. So you can sort of see in real time all of the policies that the board will be considering. So I think that would be really helpful. Um, and just, you know, generally, you know, as I'm listening to everyone and just hearing sort of how we're talking specifically around this issue of family engagement. Um, I'd like to see if, you know, if it's amenable in the future to bring in maybe like a guest. A guest group um in from D C or maybe um Montgomery County that are doing some really interesting work with. Helping schools connect with families around academics. Um, there's an organization called the Flamboyon Foundation that I've had the opportunity to to hear and to work with. And they've done some really interesting things that might be interesting, you know, just food for thought for this team. Um, or maybe I can even make the connection for folks to reach out to them or some other similar groups uh regionally. Uh, that can give us some ideas, but yes, I'm just super, super thrilled. And um I'm really gonna be working closely with Chair Millhouse to see how I can best support with the retreat. Um, by any way I can uh to make sure that that happens. So thank you all so much.
I appreciate that. And if um I I would also like us to just look first in our own backyard. To see, you know, um what's happening in P G C P S around um, you know, those things. Because we we want to know what we're doing, right? It's great to know what other people are doing, but we want to know what we're doing so we can advise. If they forgot to leave the quiet, the parent voice out of the decision-making, right? Um, and and I can say, for instance, I'm also doing a lot of work with the um the testing department. Because I'm concerned that every time a standardized test report is provided to a parent. Then I don't really know what P G C P has resources to utilize to close the gap, right? And and so if there could be some alignment when I get that testing data, for me to better understand that data and to say. Hey, you know what? I could go to I X L and the teacher has already maybe set up. The the items that my student needs to work on. Or if I'm going to Dreambox, but because we have so many resources and there are so many departments. I don't think that we all know all the various groups in P G C P S. And what they are doing and how to make sure that parents know that where we live, where we work. Where we send our students to school to, there are people that are actually doing the work to support the academic success for our students. So I'm not opposed to bringing in those groups, but I want to first make sure that we have access to to our people. To see what they're doing. So because we may need to advise, hey, you all need to do this, you know, our voices are heard in that, right?
Chair Millhouse, I just wanted to say, um, I in Ms. Welsh, correct me if I'm wrong, but that I I think that's a policy that is coming up. Um, a policy around uh student data or like, I think it's one of the last ones that was on that spreadsheet.
It's actually the data uh dashboard policy that's coming up. It's gonna come up for discussion on Tuesday night on the seventeenth.
Okay, so yeah, so.
Everything that I just mentioned is not in that. That's not, that that doesn't, it doesn't cover that.
Okay, you see, and see, this is why, and that is so important because that parent perspective, I'm sure a lot of parents. Get assessment data back. They they're looking at this information. They're like, okay, what do I do? And so that.
With with Dr. Bagot was saying, like, right, when when we have these these faith-based entities, they may have resources. And they can say, hey, we can provide a before and after school program to support, you know, the students with this academic gap. That P G C P S has identified. So we're sharing a lot of stuff, but I see, Ms. Thorpe, your hand is up.
Uh, yeah, I was, um, I just, uh, when Ms. Adam Stafford talked about Flamboyon. I would definitely like to work with her on some um and just think about how we can also adopt some of the. Um, practices of Flamboyon. I was in a school system that used it and I could say that um. I was actually a novice teacher when introduced to Flamboyon and it has really elevated my practice and how I engage parents. And how students, um, parents engage with um their children's education. It was, I mean, it it. Really transformed my engagement with parents and teach me also how to engage with parents. Um, and I think it's a wonderful program. Uh, I have not seen one downside to that um to that program. So I would really love to um really think about how we can adopt some of those principles. That um from from the Flamboyon program.
Thank you for that. And I I wanted, um, this Dr. Jackson hand is up, but I also want to say that that that's what Dr. Jackson does. Right? That's what her organize, her department, that's what they do. And 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 so that's what I'm saying. And I don't think we real recognize that the the rich resources that we actually have at our disposal. Um, and so I'm not against it. I mean, you know, I'm just one person on the committee, right, on this council. But I I want to say that if we want to do that, let's make sure that we are also looking at our family engagement. Um, department and what they do and um, you know. And and then we can kind of align the two, because if we don't know what we already have. Then we can think that we don't have access to those resources and we actually have the person sitting right here with us, Dr. Jackson.
I just want to share that uh we've been partners with Flamboyon for about five years. And many of our schools have adopted many of their strategies. Uh, if you would like a report on it, I I do not object to meeting with them if you feel that you want to. But I do want you to know that it's already here. It's been here in Prince George's County. We don't have a uh. We don't have, we haven't hired them because we just don't have that kind of money. However, they are my partners. They are my thought partners. I talk to them all the time. Um, I've written for them. So, yeah, they're here. And anything that, you know, we can share with anybody who wants to know from Flamboyon that's in the district already, we can gladly do that.
And I think that's a good idea, like what, bring them and 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 partner on how they have partnered with us.
Yeah.
Right? And 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 let them, I I think one of the things is, we don't even know all the stuff that we have access to. And I I we need to do a better job of communicating. And I think this is what this group would do, communicating what. Is available to us where we are. And then how do we maybe collaborate and get other resources in? But if we don't know what we got, you know, um, we don't really know what. Like, I don't know, how how do we fill the gap, right? Uh, we don't even know what the gaps are, Mr. Ross.
Yeah, and I apologize if this is jumping a little bit ahead, but I mean, looking over that board policy oh one oh five. Um, you know, one of the principles in it is ensuring that schools develop and require effective communications methods. And I mean, the what I see about Flamboyon sounds fantastic as as one way to do that. But is there any sort of um tracking or understanding of what our schools at a. An individual school level are doing, like where are are they, you know, not necessarily graded on it, but you know, is is the track to look for improvement? How can we we focus in? Because I know from from my own personal experience and from uh neighbors, from P T A meetings. Um, communication from schools has often been a huge pain point. Um, and it can be really inconsistent from school to school or when there's changes in administration. Um, from administrator to administrator or from teacher to teacher. And so, I mean, if I were to like look at one of the most ringing and constant things I've heard. Um, over my time with P G C P S as a parent, um, it's been where communication falls down. Seems to be one of those those things. So it just was sort of to throw out to to ask the question and. And um in looking at the A P, um, you know, how does it all sort of flow in together to. To make sure that we understand what schools are doing and how we can improve it and and build on it.
Mister um Mister Epps, thank you, Mister Ross.
Yes, I just wanted to mention, I think this is why it's very important imperative to um get some. Some movement behind this retreat, because I think, you know, we only have an hour together and this team was kind of assembled together. You know, without, you know, any type of um chemistry, any type of anything, you know. And so it took us uh the full semester, so to speak, um, to somewhat get to know each other. And we only have an hour to do it. And and I think, you know, a a retreat will allow. Uh, us, all of us to get a get an understanding of what we already had existing before we go outside the county. Um, and it also um allow us to really get to know each other, find out what resources we have access to. Um, in addition to our strengths and weaknesses and what we want to do. And so I would like to see the retreat move forward at some point this spring personally.
Thank you, Mister Epps. And and so um with that, I I want to go ahead and move into, because it it. Like you said, Mr. Epps, we we did kind of move into that, but the discussion about policy zero one five. Um, as we mentioned in the last meeting, it definitely, it needs to be updated. It hasn't been updated since um twenty twelve, right? Um, but when we look at this policy, it it. It doesn't address in 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 the details that it needs to. How do we even not only have a concise definition for what engagement looks like? How is the communication being done um or measured, the engagement practices being measured themselves? It it it's missing a lot of different things. And I can't say I'm in the position to say what's missing. And one of the things I would like for us to do is begin to work on developing questions for a survey. Right? Um, that would be sent out to uh the entire school district. That really gathers a insight on how anyone. It doesn't matter if you are in a custodial position, you are in transportation, um, you are in food services. Teacher, guardian, grandparents, just community member, how do you see engagement a- as a stakeholder with P G C P S? And use that information to begin to flush out what are the things that we need to build upon. Within this policy zero one zero five. Be- because to me, we're we're really starting from ground zero. Um, because it's it's missing so much information about um what we are describing as a whole. For engagement, equitable engagement engagement across the board. Um, but it's not just, oh, you know, make sure you have a welcoming environment. What does that look like? You know, we luckily, we do have the student handbook, the parent handbook in place so we can glean, you know, employee handbook. So there's information we can glean from that. But at the end of the day, when we're talking about engagement and we're looking at. Each of us as partners in education, if the overall arching goal is to support the academic success of every student. Then how does, how do I, as a parent, show up as that partner at education, right? What, tell me what I'm supposed to do. How do I, if I'm not a parent and I am the faith-based community, tell me what that looks like as we partner. We have the Department of the the the, what is it, the partnership, right? We have that department, right? But what it, what's the role? What do they do? And so I I really want us to begin to look at this policy and begin to identify. Um, when you're going out in the community and when you're talking to parents. See how some of their concerns fit into this policy and then see what the gaps are. Because I'm be honest with you, you're gonna find more gaps than anything, because it's not very detailed. And so um. I want to move forward. I did ask Joe Day, and I don't know, um, if Rosa, if you can help me, Ms. Adam Stafford. In creating the subcommittees, one of the questions was um under the Open Maryland, the Open Meeting um Act. That they will still need to be publicized meetings if the subcommittees are meeting separately. So we need to make sure that we have the the resource support to hold those meetings. Um, in in doing such, right?
I will say right now, we're having a transition in the board office. I will, I'm putting that on my list. I can follow up to find out um what's the capacity. Uh, for someone to staff the subcommittee meetings.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, but what I would like to do is at least maybe at this time. Uh, well, I I'll I'll just wait and then have the staff office to send out um the list. You know, you you'll either volunteer for the survey one or you're a volunteer for the subcommittee for um. Drafting policy zero one zero five. And of course, all of this will come back to the main committee. That we will vote on everything as a whole, but I I feel that if we begin to kind of break some things down. Um, we can divide and conquer, as I I as I want to say. But we also know a lot of the work is going to come from the feedback from the survey to help build this policy up. Mi- uh, Ms. Welsh. You're all mute.
I'm sorry. Uh, my next just share a few things about policy development so that we are running right, walking down the right pathway. Policies are generally, they um they they have some specifics, but they're in general more about like what the board. Wants to see, but not necessarily how to do the that is the fix. And so that's why we have administrative procedures and the kinds of things that you're talking about where this doesn't, the policy, this current policy, not great. I agree with you, the policy does need to be updated. It's outdated, but the specifics that you're asking for are things that usually we would put into. An administrative procedure and just off the top of my head. Running through administrative procedures and see if we even have a matching administrative procedure that goes with that policy. And and that was a quick search, so there might one in there, but I couldn't find one. And I'm thinking to myself. And I'm thinking to myself, since Dr. Shill Jackson is in charge of parent engagement. And we do assign administrative procedures to different departments and divisions that she would certainly be probably would fall under um a school leadership and support. And of course, uh, Dr. Jackson would probably be a person that would be a a major player in putting together the uh actual administrative procedure that would have a lot of the detail that I think thing, because we are really striving to revise our procedures to really lay out specifically what staff are supposed to be doing and how you do this, 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 and this. Not to say that your policy can't have pictures, you know, um, uh, like guidance on what it is the Board of Education would like to see, because absolutely, but you're looking more at end results. Um, with some detail, but not to what I think you're looking for, which is something that is functional. That you can actually use to get results.
Yes, and 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 so I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, that we're now doing, we would that. Okay, so right, because I looked at the administrative procedures. There was none that aligned with policy zero one zero five, not at all. So um, I'm glad that you uh, uh, that we're on the same page with that. But I hear you saying that not only are we there would be moving forward with um recommending to the board the updating of policy zero one zero five, but the development of an administrative procedure that aligns was zero one zero five.
Correct. That is correct. And and staff are responsible for doing the administrative procedures. Um, and then the board does get a copy of it, and if they, and they are looking to make sure it does align with the with the policy that was developed. Um, so um, and I think we absolutely should go down that route, especially since we don't even have administrative procedure or something that's so absolutely important and is really what we need to have to get any kind of results.
Uh huh, okay, okay.
And and the other thing I do want to share with you just in terms of the policy process. So the committee, the subcommittee could certainly be providing recommendations on the things they'd like to see in the policy. But the committee, the the policy committee though, is ultimately responsible for final finalizing what they want. And it and it also uh has to go, and this is by law, must go to the CEO, and she must also provide her input and
Yep.
guidance and direction on that. And then, as you know, goes through the entire process with the Board of Education, I'll comment first and reader and everything. I think this is an ex- a lex excellent way to go in terms of getting everyone's input on this. So that we we have a policy that, you know, really provides direction for how then we put an AP together. Administrative procedure that is highly functional and gets to what you actually would like to see.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. I I just want to thank you for that clarity, because I um, I want to make sure that everyone understands, everything that I'm saying is that we really are drafting proposals to the board advising them of our recommendations of what needs to happen. We are not, although we may draft what we think should be in it, they would be, they would have to have public comment and everything else, right? Because that allows the greater good of the the school community to have their voice in this. Um, but as the advising arm for the Board of Education, everything that we do here is to then be sent out, excuse me, to the, through Ms. Adam Stafford, our board liaison as an um, an action item that we're advising that we would like them to strongly take into consideration that she would then submit to the Board of Education as a whole, and then they would have that discussion. Um, so there are layers that we have to go through, but we do have very powerful voices. And we are in a position to be able to speak and be a part of the development of things that will impact everybody. So, thank you, Ms. Welsh. Dr. Jackson, you had your hand up, and then Ms. Adam Stafford. And then Mister.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to co-sign with Ms. Welsh. Uh, yeah, we do not have an administrative procedure about uh parent, family, community engagement. Uh, the only one that even talks about parents at all has to do with the um parent leadership organizations and their reporting and how they work with principals. So that's not related to the policy at all. So I'll be happy to work. Uh, but and I'll talk to Dr. Coley about it. I'm pretty sure that that is something that would come under her uh directed. But again, it would have to come through the CEO to the Board of Education. And um, I I would just be happy to work with that. Um, and thank you also, also for allowing uh the members of PCAC to have a voice in suggesting, uh, I love that statement, I think it's Dale Carnegie, who's uh said that people support what they help create. And I think as family, parents and family members and leaders in our system, we need to be there, helping to create the things that are talking about us. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Mister Ross?
Um, yeah, just sort of in a similar vein, the policy mentions that the uh the it says superintendent, but CEO is supposed to report on uh the policy's implementation annually. And I tried searching um in board docs and really had no clue of how to try and find any past reports. Um, so I I'd imagine that it may have been just part of normal sort of update reports if it was made. But if there's a way to isolate out um, you know, reports on what the the implementation of the policy thus far has been. That would be a good um, vivid information for us to have in trying to to understand where we're grounded on it.
Mister Ross, if I may, um, perhaps there's something we can uh ask Dr. Goldson about if she'd be willing to support in doing an update um in the coming coming months.
Thank you.
And 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 we can, um, I guess that could be added to our report, right? In 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 what we are sending to you to then send to the power, well, this report that we would send um, to the board and the CEO, because that's the role that we're supposed to be advising you all, that you would then send that forth, right? And, you know, but they would be included on the report, what we're asking, the ask, okay, okay. Um, okay, are there any other hands? I'm trying to, um, I really miss Ms. Walker, I just want you all to know.
I was just going to, um, I had my hand up, I was just going to say, um, I think one thing that could help shape some of our thoughts around how the policy could be improved could be to read some of the literature around this work. Specifically on how to create culturally responsive communities and connections between schools and families and community members. And so there's a really awesome um, just body of work around culturally responsive um, communication. And so I will uh share with Ms. Chair Milhouse a few articles. And, you know, that could be maybe part of the retreat as well. You know, um, as Mister Epps said, we can use the retreat to get to know one another, um, and then also maybe to dissect. Um, what is some of the scholarship out there um in best practice? What are some of the best practices around, you know, making these connections? Um, because there's certainly a lot out there for us to connect with. I'm thinking of some of the work of like Dorrit Hammond and um Gloria Lass and Billings. And there's so many other, Lisa Delpit, some of the other, you know, researchers that have really, you know, studied this. Um, and we can just maybe even have just some dialogue and conversation as well. So I think that could be helpful just to add to our conversation, but this is awesome.
No, that that is good, because what I I sent out um that last month was the strategies for equitable family engagement. Um, the State Support Network, um Partnering for School Improvement. And it was a report that they did um back in December twenty eighteen. And um, it it was very, uh, it was a very good read to me. And it was just very resourceful and aligns like what you said, what some of the scholarly, you know, article or information that's out there. Um, who's been doing the work, the research and the outcomes of the impact of actually having an equitable, you know, um, engagement practices in the school district and in the impact that it's had. Um, and how to go about and what should be in the definition of that, you know, engagement definition for the district as well. So, um, you know, once you share that information, I'll just add it to our shared drive, um, where we just kind of put information and houses, so everyone can have access to it, read it at leisure. And I welcome all of you, that if you come across some information, add it to the drive so that we could, you know, we could read it, right? We're sharing information um um, to really help us then share that same information with the parent body, right? Share it with teachers, share it with whoever, but I think I'm adding, Ms. Adam Stafford, that would be excellent to keep adding as much reading material as we can to make sure that, you know, we have a good understanding of what we're trying to create here in PG CPS that becomes our own. Right? It it's, we're changing the culture, that's what we're about to do, you all. So I know we, it may not seem like we're doing a lot, and we're not out there rah rah and having out, but we're doing a lot of work. Um, in this discovery work, you know, it it's it's the administrative board work, that's not always the excitement. But it is the groundwork that needs to be done to create the foundation that we need. So, um, I will send out more information a- as relates to the subcommittees. Once Ms. Adam Stafford and I kind of figure out who who I need to, you know, speak to based on the new, the transitions happening in the board office. Um, and then we can just sign up and 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 get to work. And like, this is realistic, it's not going to happen this school year. It is not going to happen this school year, right? Um, we will, we'll be able to report out, and I, my goal is to um have a report for February or March, and then a report um at the end of the school year. So we have a little bit more work um that gives me a clearer insight that if we report out twice um a year, that that that's pretty good. Because we can talk about what we have been doing, you know, the first half of, you know, us being, you know, the PCAC and then mid-year, right? Or at the end of the year, so mid-year and then at the end of the year. Um, and I I'm hoping that we can, like, uh, uh, the co-chair and I spoke. And one of the things that we were also um discussing was maybe having a summer retreat that kind of, you know, gets a a what, how we focusing, what is it going to look like for the school year? So we can have some structure and guidance on how we're going to move forward for that school year. Um, because in a year, somebody else is taking the seat, so let's see how much work we can get done. Um, over the next two years, and someone else may be the chair, going once, going twice. No takers? It's been real, you all. So I think that we um, in two point three, I just moved right into two point three about reporting and discussion um around that. It's like I said, um, I want you all to give me feedback, but I think two reports a month, um, i- is just, right? Mister Ross?
Uh, two a year, right? Not two a month?
I'm sorry, two, two within the school year, yes. Thank you, I'm ready to go to bed. Two within the school year um term uh would be um the reporting cycle. Um, so February, March, and then the last one would be at the last board meeting in June. And so if if anyone thinks that we should have um a greater frequency, please speak up. If we should have less, please speak up. Um, but that's my two cents. Two, good. I mean, I'm not sure if we really need to vote on that. Um, it's not like we need to have a motion on the floor, but we're going to do it anyway. We have a discussion, all in favor for having two uh meetings per, I mean, meaning reports to um board liaison, so she can submit to the board and the CEO to a year. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and so we will then move forward at the next meeting, I will bring um that up for um, I guess we would need to update it at some point in the bylaws. But the bylaws are just, they've gone through first reader, right? Um, Ms. Adam Stafford? It's okay. Um, now we're in um item point three, follow-up and next steps. So, um, Ms. Adam Stafford, are you coming back? Oh.
Yes, our baby, the baby was doing her thing. Um, um, I have down um in terms of next steps, you know, following up on the retreat, following up on uh subcommittee work. Um, ensuring that you all have a list of the upcoming um policies that are going to be discussed. And then sharing some information on um some culturally responsive in the community. Um, reading resources that could be useful for the team.
Uh huh, uh huh. Okay, thank you. And um, for me, I just want to ask you all, please, if however I could better support us as chair, please let me know. Um, you know, one of the things for me is really about how we are building um, community amongst each other. And since we have not seen each other outside of these boxes on our screen or the phone calls that I've made to you all. Um, I I am open, if my calendar will allow me to, to attend um, the uh PTO meetings that you all may be attending, I will. Ms. Hollins, you are District Six.
I need. Correction, I'm District Nine. I used to be in District Six, and I keep having that in my head, but I'm actually not, I'm sorry.
Oh, let me write nine on my paper.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's nine, I'm sorry. A different school and it's across the street is real crazy, but they're right here and I don't know why they're two different districts. It's very.
It's okay, so who's District Six?
It's not me.
Oh, I wonder who it is.
Is it, it's not Ms. Thor? No, she knows her district.
No, I'm four.
I'm sorry.
Well, well, it's okay, I'll figure it out. I'll find District Six. I I will find it, I will, um, I will go back at the top of the agenda.
Miss, but it's supposed to be for District Nine, and Ms. Holland should, we have you down for District Six. So we'll have to just go back to that list and see what's going on there.
Uh oh. I guess I have a question, so should I contact um Chair Milhouse offline or?
Maybe we can do it offline.
Okay, that'll work.
Chair Milhouse, I'm the, I'm gonna just just make this one point. Uh, our vice chair, Ms. Walker, uh, made a recommendation for our PCAC members to sign up for the distribution list on the website for the Board of Education. And then you will be connected with everything that's happening with your board members.
Yes, yes. So we need to just make sure, what I, what I'm hearing also is that we probably just need to have a resource sheet to send out to say, PCAC, make sure you do boom, boom, boom. Make sure you sign up here to get this information. Go here to make sure you are up to date where the policies are. Go here to make sure you know where the board meetings, um, when you need to sign up. I- in that way, you can take that sheet as well and send it out to parents in the community. Um, because it's a resource that we're sharing with everyone, right? And it's something that we could continue to reuse over and over again. So, um, if Ms. Adam Stafford, i- if if you could help me, um, make sure we have that. Uh, I'm gonna say a one pager right now that we could always add to.
Yeah.
That that will make sure that you all have everything versus saying, make sure you all do this, make sure you all do that, make sure you all do that. Because it's a lot of dos and as to have to do. Okay? And I know that was grammatically incorrect, but it's okay. Okay, Ms. Lund.
Yeah, okay, this is good, thank you, Chair. Um, so you had mentioned that an upcoming board, the upcoming board meeting for those members of PCAP who can attend to attend. Is that still?
Yeah, it's tomorrow, I, and and Ms. Adam Stafford, if you could, um, just speak, because I did, when I went to sign up to speak um this Thursday, I saw it on the agenda. And I want to be there anyway. I am not speaking, as I stated to you all, as the chair um of the PCAC. I am speaking as parent and with my regular public education advocacy work. Um, but if you can attend, I know Ms. Adam Stafford will be um communicating um, at that meeting about the PCAC that we're here, what's happening. Um and so if you can be in attendance, if not mandatory, it's not like we're going to stand up and everybody's going to say their name. Um but it would be a good opportunity for you to um have a quick. You know, meet and greet with some board members, especially if you come early on. Um there's always an opportunity, or if you decide to stay late, I come early enough, so after I speak, I can go home. And watch the rest online. So, uh yes, it is tomorrow at seven PM.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Yep, and so, um, we talked about next steps, what um. Really is about making sure that we get that information to you, Ms. Adam Stafford. We put you on here as item three point three for your. Um report from the PCAC uh liaison. And so I know that you kind of spoke out um a little bit early on. But w- is that sufficient for your report? Do you have anything addition to that, in addition to that? Okay, um so the time is eight. And um I just want to thank you all. Happy New Year. Um I I'm excited. There's a lot to report out that we all are doing. So once we put it in black and white and you get to see it, you're just like, oh, we are doing a lot. We are doing a lot. So. Please don't get discouraged. Don't think that we're just meeting in vain. Um and we're about to change the culture in PG CPS. And everybody in the world is going to want to talk about what we're doing. And how is it that we were able to get such a a equitable engagement practice in place? And we're going to say because they listen to the community and the parents. And on that note, I'm going to adjourn. It's eight thirty-two. Have a great one.